Guess we'll go through roll call.
I can see you're all here.
All right, join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we pray, join me in prayer, please. Father God, we praise and thank you who you are. You truly are an amazing God. And Lord, it says in your word that ask for wisdom and you will give us. So we ask for wisdom tonight for the commissioners as they make decisions, for us who are in the crowd as we just seek to understand what you have for this county. But Lord, may we walk with a heart desire to glorify you in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Anybody want to make any changes? Add anything?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second it.
Your ballot.
Yes.
What was that?
Yes.
Yes.
Just the minutes from last week. Approval of the minutes from 2:325.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 2:325.
I second.
Wasn't that approved there?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Consent agenda, approval of the accounts payable totaling $302,311.69 and approval of payroll totaling $296,951.12.
I had a question on the accounts payable. I don't have it in front of me. Because it is involving a non-elected personnel. It's just on page six of 48. That's a payment.
Without having...
You don't have it with you either, do you?
Is it for mileage, meals, something like that?
No, it's a, it's a, like paycheck.
There shouldn't be a paycheck.
Or a fund. It's a fund.
Um...
I don't have it on me. I mean, I don't want to say it out loud.
Can I have those over there, please? Probably the other one.
I guess my question would be, is that, that department's fund or is that out of our general fund? Do you see it?
Hold on, I'll find it. Give me just a second.
What, what page? Page six.
Page six. Oh, that's 16. It wasn't supposed to be that. Page six.
He's contract labor for the county attorney.
Okay. And, I mean, that would be the county attorney that hired him, right?
Yeah. We'd have to ask him for those questions.
That's all I need to know. Thank you. I will.
You're more than welcome to call me if you have any questions like that anytime and I can talk to you.
Do you have the question?
Huh? Well, I mean, I was questioning, you know, why.
No, no, that's not, no.
But that was the only question I had. So I'll talk to the county attorney.
Yeah, and he's contract labor, so he's not payroll. He's just, he's contract labor.
Okay.
Just $99.
Okay.
So, you want to wait until your question's answered? Are you going to...
Well, my question was answered.
Okay. So, make a motion?
He made the motion, I think. Or did you make?
I don't know.
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, approval of accounts payable totaling $302,311.69 and approval of payroll totaling $296,951.12.
I'll second it.
Christopher?
Yes.
Your ballot.
Yes. Yes. All business, outsourcing tax sale. So I guess we're going to have a call with Christopher McElgon from Clinton Osterman, Attorneys at Law. I'm going to assume that one thread.
This is Susan Walker. Good. You've got your, we've got our three commissioners here and you are go.
All right, so, did you see my, my partner Michelle had left sent a information sheet to you guys? Did you see that?
Yes, and they all have that.
Okay, so, I guess I just basically always kick this off as, what do we want to cover today? What would you like to know? Or do you just kind of want me to generally describe what we do or how would you like
So I think it's been brought up to us in the past that we have been having our tax sales and they've been, what'd you say, Mr. Hoyt, quick-deeded to us? Or quick-deeded to the...
Most of them are awarded a quick claim deed.
A quick claim deed. But then that causes problems down the road if somebody actually makes improvements. The original landowner can come back and file suit to get it back or something like that, and that's what we want to avoid going forward with any of our tax sales.
Well, let's, let's kind of, let me just kind of walk, kind of walk through it a little bit. The whole idea of the tax foreclosure, the actual sale of property, you know, the primary goal is to get people to come in, the primary goal is to get people to come in and sell and, and pay the taxes. Now, ultimately, if you get, if we have to sell something, then the goal, though, is to give enough people service, notice, service of process, notice to foreclose their interest. And there's no, and only those people who you, only the owner or mortgage companies that you have failed to give good service to have the right to come in and set aside the sale. Nobody else does. So if I have a judge, if I'm a judgment creditor, I have a child support judgment against the owner of the property, I don't, I don't get to come in and set aside, set aside the sale, okay? And on top of that, on top of that, though, you have to have inadequate service. And so as the owners, you typically always get good service on them. If they get good service on them, they cannot come back and set aside, set aside the sale. Well, number two, in tax foreclosure, the county doesn't get any warranty, all right? That is sold at a judicial sale, the deed comes from the sheriff, or comes from the court, signed by the sheriff. There, the board has, or the county has absolutely no obligation as to that property because it's not the seller. The court's the seller. And so, and so for that reason, anybody who buys property at a tax foreclosure sale takes it with notice of all defects. If it's defective, that's your problem, Mr. Buyer. You've got to basically do what you need to do to clean up your interests if there's a problem. But we rarely ever, ever, I've, I've been doing this, oh, I've been doing it for 30 years at least, if not a little bit longer, and Sheldon's been doing it with me for about 15 years, my partner. And I can tell you, the last 15 years, 10 to 15 years, I've only had three, three, out of all the counties that we do, we've only had about three set-aside motions that have even been filed, and we weren't all three of them. Now, so, if your experience is otherwise, then I, no, I don't, I can't speak to that because I don't know what the specifics are, but if somebody's coming back and saying that the county has some obligations coming out of that tax sale after the property's sold, you don't, as a matter of law, you don't. If, if somebody comes in and, let's say, hey, you knew where I was, you didn't serve me with process, I would've came in and paid the taxes, then the sale, the sale gets set aside, the bidder gets his bid back, the owners still have to pay all the taxes and costs, they just don't get to walk away and say, oh, we can, we can roll with this. They still have to, as part of the set-aside, they still have to, they still have to pay all the taxes and costs. So I'm not really quite sure, probably going a little bit of the far field as to what your question of concern was, but if your, if your concern is in the past that you've had some problems with post-sale challenges, you know, that's something that the way we do things is, we just have to run into that. Basically, what we do is, we start the lawsuits and make an initial filing as to all the parcels that are eligible for tax foreclosure that year. We, we basically go with whatever information is on the tax rolls. We serve all of those people first, give them a chance to come in and redeem the property by paying all the taxes and fees and costs on the property. Then in the meantime, we're getting the title work from the title company. Then when we get all the title work, we add all the parties that the title work reveals, whether they be, you know, for whatever reason, judgment creditor, mechanics lien holder, something like that. We did add, add those people to the lawsuit and then we serve all of them. We publish notice and mail notice to every, independent of the service of process with copies of the petition to all the, all the interested parties. We have, I have two staff people that basically do all the zip tracing. We have some location services that we use to try to locate people if we don't have good addresses for them. And then we make a showing to the court as to anyone that we have to rely on publication service, that we've done a reasonable, made a reasonable inquiry to find their whereabouts. Because that's all we have to do is make reasonable attempts, or reasonable efforts to locate their whereabouts. And then, and that's enough to withstand any type of challenge after the sale, anybody that wants to come in. But long as, as long as you make adequate, reasonable efforts to locate it and serve it, then you're, you're protected because we have to remember, this isn't like a car accident where I get a personal judgment against the owner, where I can harness their wages or those type of things. Your only recourse is against the property. And, and so it's kind of like a lawsuit against the property as opposed to a lawsuit against the person. So I don't know if that's speaking to your question or not. I'll set up and let you follow up on, on your concerns.
I think the question that was posed to us on this, it deals with, with the city land bank and, on, on property that, that for whatever reason doesn't get sold and it's donated to them. I think that's where the question, and we have a representative from that, from the land bank here, if the chairman would be...
Would you like to ask him questions, Mr. Hoyt?
I, I have a, I, I, I have a very developed opinion on how and, and what I think is irrelevant law as the land bank, but if, if property doesn't sell, my analysis, and I've been kind of going back and forth with several municipalities, that the property doesn't sell at, at the tax sale, there is a method by which the left property could be subsequently sold privately, and there's a methodology to do that, but you don't have to do that. The land bank doesn't have to take property. But I don't, if the land bank takes property, if the land bank takes title to that property and if the land bank's problem, if there is, if there is any post-trans, post-transfer challenges, because the land bank stays, stands in the shoes, the same shoes as a tax sale purchaser. It is buyer beware. And so if that, if that property, if the, if the owner of that property says, I haven't been served, and can successfully challenge the tax foreclosure sale or transfer of property, then, then that's, that's the way it works, that the, the land bank stands for that law and the land bank doesn't, has absolutely no recourse against the county because the county gives no warranty. So I don't know quite if that's what you're worried about, or is, your situation is, so maybe somebody could, if I'm missing the boat, if somebody, you could please articulate it.
I'm going to allow Mr. Hoyt, a representative from the land bank, to explain their side of it.
Chris, what we're trying to get ahead of is the properties coming to the land bank, which we get via sheriff sale or tax sale, and coming to us with only a quick claim deed. It, as you know, it's, it's kind of difficult to get a loan or, or use as collateral that property with a quick claim deed. So what we're trying to do is to get ahead of, it's almost trying to get ahead of what you're about to try to do with, with the property in offering it or going to these folks with even notice. We would like to approach them first and see if they would like to donate it to the land bank with a warranty deed, to where we could satisfactorily then sell it with a warranty deed. And to give you...
But you don't get, but the problem you have is that you don't get to pay the taxes that way.
Well, understood. We, that is, of course, one of the first things out of our request would be, would you like to pay the taxes so you can have your property back? And we won't take it into the land bank. But most of the time, the stories that we get, and we have, one commissioner here could confirm this, grandma and grandpa died, we don't want anything to do with this, and it sits and turns into blight, gets sold for back taxes, becomes a sheriff sale if they had a loan or, or whatever. Then we get it and it's just a continuation of the blight with a quick claim deed, because nobody can get a loan on it, becomes their, their extra side yard, they might take the risk of building a garage or something on it, but that's where it kind of sits. We have a piece of property right now that we have taken on, on a sheriff's sale, and make a long story endless, the person that was living in the property is still there. And so we've had to go through an eviction procedure and the grandchildren of this property owner now wants to redeem the property. And in our, we've got, we've got an illegal opinion that says we, they could come back over a period of 10 years if they want to pay the taxes and the specials and claw that property back.
Now, I don't know where that comes from, right? Mr. Hoyt, can you please tell me?
Well, that's, that, if you went through, if you went through the foreclosure, let's step back, make sure I understand, a foreclosure action was filed, correct? The property is now an owner of the, is now the, the land bank is now the owner of the property, yes.
Right, but let me go through the process, though, make sure I understand, because the property was in tax foreclosure, a tax foreclosure judgment foreclosing the tax lien was entered, the property went up for sale, the land bank bid on it and...
Well, we get it by forfeiture. We don't, we don't, we don't pay for any property, we just get it by forfeiture in a sheriff's sale.
Nobody bid on it. So then you guys become the holders of the property.
We get it by default.
And what is, and what in the world is the legal, what's the legal basis for just getting it by default?
You'd have to ask the sheriff that.
How does that, how does that work? Who gets the deed to the land bank?
Chris, this is Commissioner Krueger. There's a lot of misconceptions out there right now that I'm glad that you're getting involved with this, that you can clear up, because we have one gentleman who's not in here today, but he is of the mind that we can go to these people and ask them to give the deed as forgiveness of taxes, which is illegal, and I've told them that they can't do that. So unless I'm wrong, I'd like you to confirm that while we have our representative here. And there's just several misconceptions that need, that need to be, need to be addressed in that, in that, in that light.
I can tell you, you guys are, and, and listen, the land bank's got a tough job. I mean, their mission is admirable. I think that everybody, in my opinion, and I don't mean to step on any toes, because it's exactly worth whatever, whatever is worth, which is nothing or nothing, but I think that the one problem that we have is in Kansas, and I just did a big presentation at the en banc meeting of the Wichita City Council and the Central County Commission. And we've been going back and, I've been going back and forth with the, with the assistant city manager here in Wichita on this, but for some reason, there's been some type of push that tax foreclosure is the savior or feeding force for the land bank. And, and the tax foreclosure statutes predate anything having to do with the land bank. Now, the land banks have the advantage, the land banks have the advantage of being able to ultimately make property tax exempt when it, after it receives it, which is great. But, but beyond that, the tax foreclosure process is not really set up in a way to effectively funnel property into a land bank and let the land bank bid at the sale. Okay? All right. So, that's the, that's the big, that's, that's the biggest problem, because my question, and you are correct, you cannot just swap out, receive it, what I call a deed in lieu of foreclosure, like you might in a mortgage case, but you can't say, you give us a deed and we'll forgive the taxes. That, that, that doesn't really work well, and I don't, and, and so you've got a problem there. And so if you're saying that quick claim deed comes from the, from the owner, then I don't understand how the owner can come back in and try to get the property back 10 years from now. If a quick claim deed is coming from the county, the county doesn't have title to the property. So that's why I asked who the deed came from.
Well, in this particular case, the, the deed came from the sheriff. We had the, we, we had the grandchildren of the, the last warranty deed holder make a bid of $300, and evidently in the statute, anybody that's an heir cannot just, cannot bid on the property, but they can redeem the property if they want to pay the back taxes. And that seems to be...
No, they can't, and no, they can't. That's a misconception.
Well, we just have to say we have a disputed interpretation.
If that's what happened, okay.
Yeah.
But they have to, do they have to redeem it prior to sale?
Well, it hasn't been redeemed prior to sale, but we have, we've established a deadline of the 20th of this month, that if they come up with the tax amount, we're going to allow them to redeem it from the treasurer's office. And you're saying that is, that's not a good legal opinion?
Well, let me ask you this. Are the, are the holders of the last, I probably was a little bit too quick. Are the holders of the last deed of record, are they still alive?
Yes.
Okay, then heirs do not, the only people that have the ability to redeem property, all right, to pay taxes, if you keep it out of foreclosure, are the owners and mortgage holders, all right? Now, let's, let's set that, let's set that aside. I've always wanted about never, ever, ever turn money down or give money back.
Right.
If, if my kids come in, if I don't pay my taxes and my property is going to get foreclosed on, and my kids want to come in and pay the taxes, as long as they're paying everything they're supposed to pay, pay in full, all the taxes, all the costs, all the fees, everything against that property, then certainly, certainly let them, let, let them do that. But they don't get title to the property by redeeming it. It's still in the, it's still a mom and dad, it's still a mom and dad's name, so to speak.
Well, we've even, we've kind of even applied an additional encumbrance upon them because we've said if they redeem it now for the payment of the taxes, we can still only transfer a quick claim deed to them.
You don't, yeah, you can't do that.
Right, so I think this conversation maybe is going beyond what you all want to accomplish here, and I would be more than happy to meet with, our, our objective at the land bank is to try to get as many properties that are not quick claim deed that we possibly can. And if there's any way in the process that we could, we could manipulate that or, or accomplish that, that's what we want to do.
Sure.
But, and then the other thing that we were hoping to do is expand the land bank to, right now it's confined to the city limits, and maybe expand the purview of the land bank to the county, through a county representative. And I think I'll just leave it at that, and we could have a technical conversation on how this could work later.
Well, okay, yeah, it, 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 the give and take on, in, like I say, a school sit, school session on land bank is probably one that needs to be done face-to-face because it brings itself to that type of give and take and over the phone or cutting out and everything, and, and it just, it, it's better to communicate even face-to-face than the post and zoom or something like that.
Right.
I'd be more than happy, I'd be more than happy to do that, even just a one-on-one telephone call. But I, what I'm trying to get at is, then what are you looking for with regard to tax foreclosure services? Are you not looking for any tax foreclosure services?
The way I understand it, we're several years behind on, on having our, our tax foreclosure services even caught up, I believe. So we are obviously looking for a way to start having these auctions and start getting the back taxes on these properties, I believe.
I'm sorry, Chris, this is Commissioner Bierbauer. The deal with the land bank, that was just kind of a sidebar, that we were trying to figure out what, what, you know, on the quick claim deeds and the troubles that they're having with property in the city before we, you know, make that commitment to put the county or, or try to figure out a way for the county to join in on that. But right now, I think the biggest pressing matter is this big stack of foreclosures that we have, so...
How many, how many parcels do you think you have that are eligible for foreclosure?
If you go back to 2020, 2020 and before, there's around 180 of them.
180, okay. Okay, now, here, let me, and Michelle sent a kind of explanation. Now, what we do for tax foreclosure is we do it from soup to nuts as far as... Now, what we do for tax foreclosure is we do it from soup to nuts as far as getting everything prepared, pursuing the foreclosure action, getting it to sell. Of course, we work with the treasurer because the treasurer has to collect the redemption amount. And, you know, we, we communicate on it, you know, on a regular, a daily basis if necessary with our treasurers. But for the, and we handle the service of process and all of that. We don't have to worry about the, the sheriff having to, to, uh, dedicate services or, or, uh, resources with that. And what we do then, what we do is, is we charge a per parcel flat fee, all right? And let's say it's, you know, if you got a, the, the number that you quoted that we begin with, that it would probably be about 300 and, 300, 350 dollars a parcel. That is added to the redemption, the amount the taxpayer has to pay to redeem the property. And so basically, then we start the process. We work, our biggest job is to get service process to make sure nobody can come back and challenge the, the lawsuit or the sale. We're pretty, pretty darn good at that. But by giving notice, then we're getting people, giving people the incentive to come in and say, hey, you've got to come in and, and pay all the taxes that are due in all years, not just the oldest year, not just the years that trigger eligibility, but the oldest years. And on top of that, you have to pay the, the per parcel attorney's fee of 350 bucks. You've got to pay the title company's title fee, which is usually a hundred and twenty-five dollars or thereabouts. It just depends on count, on counting and then county to county. And then there is a court cost, which typically is a hundred dollar a parcel because you have to pay for the publication notices. You have to be able to pay for service of process and those type of things. So basically, when the owner comes in and says, boy, I don't want my property to go to tax sale, then they have, before the day, before the day of sale, they got to pay all the taxes and full, all the interest, all the costs, all the attorney's fees and the court, court fee. And when we go to sale, then we sell, let's say you start out with a hundred and you sell 20. Then we sell that, sell 20 and then you have that, and it goes to the highest bidder. Maybe it's five dollars, maybe it's a hundred dollars, maybe it's $10,000. You don't, what the statute says to the highest bidder, uh, the sale goes to the highest bidder. And then, uh, we get the sale confirmed and we get, we get the, the deeds issued to the tax sale purchaser, and then you have all the sale proceeds. And then all of that goes into paying the remain, first pays any of the remaining costs and the remaining, uh, such as the cost for title work, cost for publication by the newspaper. And then again, anything that's left that, that apply to attorney's fees. And then in that way, everybody gets paid. And then, uh, if there's not enough to pay us, the attorneys, then our, our fee is reduced to whatever is the amount available to pay. And in that way, the tax, I'm sorry, in that way, the owner of the property, they bear the cost of the tax foreclosure action and the county doesn't bear the cost out of its, its budget. It is a, it is a self-funding, self-paying mech, mechanism. Obviously, the treasurer, the county, all of the taxes that are collected through redemptions prior to sale, they get all of those taxes and the, and, and the, and the redeeming owners have paid, paid the expenses. So the county's a hundred percent whole and has a hundred percent collection. Where you might take a little loss is back, back to sale, but the goal is to get that, that you still get tax revenue from the sale. Sometimes there's no sales, but you get tax revenue from your sale and you create the remaining amount of money to pay the remaining costs.
I think that would be in a perfect world because, uh, we have quite a few pieces of property that have special assessments from mowing and maintenance and those of that, of that nature that would still be on the property.
That stuff can be waived.
It can be waived, but it doesn't have to be waived.
Uh, Chris, um.
That's not, that's not exactly right on the specials. Specials who, that are laying on the property are foreclosed. That, and if, and a municipality doesn't have the ability to say, oh, my current specials that are leased, I can still, I can still get payment on those. No, that's not what the law says. The statute provides that the admirarant property taxes and any specials that are existing leased get wiped out by the tax sale. So the owners stay free and clear of that. Now, like future specials, like perhaps you put in some buttering and then you spread those specials out over several years. Those future specials that aren't yet leased on the property, those don't get wiped out. But let's say, but I have a, 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 let's say they demolished a, a structure on the property and I got a $10,000 special tax lien, special assessment lien, that gets wiped out. That gets wiped out. That's gone with the admirarant property tax. So if there's some thought that the purchaser at tax sale is getting property that is still subject to the, uh, special assessment lien, specials that are, that are existing leased, that's not correct.
Okay. You, you're talking after the sale. I'm, I'm talking before the sale.
Hey, Chris, this is, uh, Commissioner Kruger again. Um, if.
Before they sell, they have to pay it. Yeah, you're right. You're right. They have to pay it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
If, uh, it does go to sale and there is no bid, we can bring that back up again at a later date. We don't just have to.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Yeah. I just wanted to, wanted to verify that.
What we do is we don't, we don't dismiss those out of the, out of the case. We kind of, they, it stays pending. You, you, you have some methods. We can rebid it. Uh, you can keep it in the case and roll it into the next year's, uh, uh, next year's foreclosure action. That way, people take them in and pay the oldest year. There's only 50 case. You can, there's a, there's a methodology under the statute that allows you to do, uh, a private sale, the county to do a private sale, uh, uh, within the tax foreclosure action. But you, you don't, you don't have to, we don't dismiss those out. We basically keep them in the case until, and we see what happens. Uh, knowing that you can always roll it into, uh, a special case.
Perfect. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready to hold the land bank school, I'm, uh, just let me know.
Those land banks are, are tough. What I want to know is, is that you, and I know down in Crawford County, uh, I was talking to some folks down there and they were doing things a certain way that, you know, that I don't think really what you're supposed to be doing, but kind of one of those things where, hey, you kind of do what you're big enough to do and there's no many challenges, yeah, I guess you're okay.
And we're all leaning on each other for the learning process. And, uh, I understand Iowa's going through it tonight to establish a land bank, so.
Yeah. And so what happens is, is that you get a, you get a land bank that's full of these properties. And so the land bank is holding those properties. Who's, who's mowing them?
Yeah, we are.
Who's, yeah, exactly. Exactly. And so there's this unfunded continuing expense as the property that, uh, uh, that's in the land bank. And some of the land banks have kind of shut themselves down and, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute. We got figures out. We can't take any more property. Uh, I, I think that there is, uh, I think again, that, that a land bank should not, in my opinion, and everybody's, every community's different. The land bank should not be a holding, a, a, a holding entity for property that sells at a depressed tax sale or doesn't sell, or sells at a depressed value. Uh, because what are you going to do with it? What are you going to do with it?
The right, the same thing we're doing now. We're mowing it.
Yeah, exactly. And I always say, and I tell people, I mean, we have 25 minutes of announcements that we give to the general public at, at every sale. And I always say, if you're not willing to lose a hundred percent of your bid because it's a bad purchase, don't bid. Because if property is in tax sale, it means it doesn't have value. And, or it has special value to only certain purchasers. But if anything that has value, somebody's come in and, and, and tried to save the property by paying the taxes, acquiring the property and paying the taxes. And so when you get down to that last batch of properties that are, hey, we've done everything we can to get somebody to come in and pay, and those go to sale, there's usually something screwed up about those, about those properties.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
I think I got all my questions answered.
I'm good.
Well, I think I raised probably more, I thought you raised more than I called. I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate it. You confirmed a lot of things that, uh, I've been looking into and I was advised that I was incorrect and so you were a big help tonight.
I would be more than happy to, to trot out the, uh, east, to sit down and, and, and spend an afternoon or an evening or whatever to, to talk about all of this, give me a better idea. I could bring some materials, have my statute book handy. Be more than happy to come out and do that. Uh, and then, you know, maybe ask some questions if you would like to consider hiring us. You may have somebody that you would like, that you like locally to handle the tax foreclosure. That's great. I never want to take business away from somebody local. Uh, but I'll talk land bank and tax foreclosure with anybody until the cows come home.
Is there, is there?
Again.
I'm sorry, is there any way that, uh, you could possibly meet with our land bank and, uh, and attend one of their meetings?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's just basically getting everybody scheduled together. Uh, no, it's not, that's not a problem. That's not a problem. We're more than happy to do it. And, um, and, uh, I love doing it so much, I don't even charge for it. How about that?
Well, they, they have a, they have a meeting coming up on, uh, the 27th at four o'clock. Is that something you could possibly make?
Let's see.
Should be a Monday.
I think, I, I think I can. What time do they meet?
At four o'clock at, uh, City Hall here in Fort Scott.
Okay. Well, I'll confirm back with, uh, on the 27th. Okay.
Perfect.
What day is that on?
It's on a Monday.
It's on a Monday?
At four o'clock, yeah.
Would you, um, so it's the same day as our meeting?
I'll be there.
Um, would you like to also come to our commission meeting so we can ask some more questions in person and have a conversation?
Okay. Now, wait there. Are we talking, did you say February 27th? That's a Thursday, not a Monday.
One second, we're verifying.
We'll verify it here.
Sure.
So it's, I guess it's the 24th. Cause we had to move it, cause if we were on the, when's President's Day? I thought that was the 20th.
President's Day is next Monday.
That's next Monday.
We would ordinarily meet on the 17th, so it'll be the next Monday.
It would be the 24th instead of the 27th. And that would co, that, that would also coincide with our meeting here at 5:30.
Sounds, sounds good. I will just plan on, and I'll, uh, I'll, uh, I'll just plan on being, I'll confirm with somebody's City Hall location and everything, but I'm going to put it down. We start off at the land bank at four and then move over to the commission meeting thereafter. Is that right?
These, these places are only a block apart. The first place, it won't be at 123, uh, South Main. And then the next meeting will be at 210 South National. They're a block apart.
Okay. Now, I will, um, I think, uh, treasurer and I exchanged emails. I'll just confirm this fact. And then that way, uh, if there's somebody else I needed to communicate with, uh, the treasurer will let me know.
Perfect.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hey, no problem. Look forward to seeing everybody at the end of nothing. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
See you back. Bye.
Before we go on to the next thing, do we need to discuss?
Um, uh, we can think about it. And in two weeks, when he shows up, we can make that decision.
You want to wait and table it for them?
Yeah, table it till the next, uh, till, well, till they're easier in person and can.
I don't think that you can get better than for.
Answer, yeah, it's not going to cost us nothing. It's obviously pretty good.
I'm impressed so far.
Yeah.
Very.
So, um.
Okay. Well, we'll move on then.
So, all right. So I guess we have a meeting with the land bank people on the 24th of February.
Yep.
Um.
Will you all be attending?
I will not be able to go to the land bank meeting.
I will be there already. I usually have to attend.
Yeah, we'll just let, we'll just let Commissioner Kruger go and
Be the norm.
And ask questions for the commission and then.
So I'll be there.
Wednesday, we're going to add him to the board.
That's fine.
With voting powers.
Yeah.
And I, I think they're going to invite, they're going to do voting powers too, so. For you. So.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll just have to announce that you're both there.
All right. That's fine.
Or both might be there.
Yeah. I guess since I'm.
We don't think you have to be there yet. You might want to start going to the meetings after you retire, but I think you're good for now. All right. Uh, hospital equipment disposal.
Um, I basically spoke with, uh, the folks at Freeman. Um, they did give a list that I have. Uh, there's only about 10, 12 items on that list, but there's actually a ton of items that they have in these different rooms. Um, basically this stuff was found and gathered as they were cleaning up the hospital. Um, so there's really not a, it's something that's never been talked about, some of this equipment. Um, after speaking with the attorney on this, um, he suggests that going forward, that we would, uh, have an auction, maybe an onsite auction and sell what we could. And then, uh, what doesn't sell, potentially donate at that time to go overseas or wherever we decide to discard it.
Just give it to a nonprofit somewhere.
So, um, that would be our, our, our next thing that we would need to get, uh, involved with finding, um, an auctioneer and a time, date, place and make this happen.
Well, you're going to do it onsite?
That would.
You say it? I mean, I.
It would probably be easier to do it onsite with their permission and I will set, and I will set that up if possible. Um, because there is an enormous amount. It would be a real undertaking to find a building and, and, and move it.
Is it something we should all make time and go out there and look through it and see what we got and try to make a list?
I have pictures of a lot of it. Um.
Can you send them to the clerk and then?
Well, I, I tried and I'm not real savvy, but yeah, we'll, we'll get them, we'll get them.
Yeah, that way we can get copies.
Uh, and it, and it goes from anything, um, from, you know, hospital equipment to desks, to chairs, to, um, fixtures.
Yeah.
Nothing hazardous.
Uh.
I think an auction is a good idea.
A lot of that kind of stuff is gone already. So, yeah, it's just, um.
Radiation, rate, extray.
No, there's, there's noth, I didn't see anything on the list or anything in the pictures of that size or, or caliber of cost.
That equipment that they could fix, they are using. So, um, I think this would be stuff that is probably cheaper to buy than repair or that they said they could just.
And some of it's, some of it's outdated to where it's obsolete for, for a hospital of their caliber. Yeah.
For what we do, yeah, okay.
But that, if, uh, you, you guys are okay with that, I'll look into the next step of an onsite, um, auction and then, um, take out bids for an au, an auctioneer or I know we have an auctioneer that, uh, works for us. If he would want to maybe donate his time or, or whatnot, but if you guys are okay with it, I'll look into all that and
Yeah, start figuring out.
Report back to you because I know this, they want this stuff gone.
Yeah, let's, I mean, keep it above board and let's see what we can do about disposing of it.
Do we have other county property in the basement that I think can probably go to? So if we could just take it out there and.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
It just collects until you can.
Right. You guys look like a bunch of hoarders.
Well, with, with your permission, I will, uh, I will try to make that some of this stuff happen and then I'll report back to you and let you know. happen, and then I'll report back to you and let you know what I figured out, and get your permission before we make it a go.
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Kruger works on the hospital equipment disposal.
I'll second that motion.
Your vote?
Yes.
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 All right, public comments for items not on the agenda. Mr. Clint Walker, flags and dispatch.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that.
Sure.
Flags. Number one, the American flag on public buildings, that, you know, the county owns. Number two, the Kansas State flag. And number three, POW MIA. If you're putting any other flag in front of a fire station, other than those three, you're opening yourself up so this organization can put their flag up there. And that, in my opinion, that's the only three that should be on a county building. And, uh, one last thing on flags, and it's flag adequate, is flags should be, have a light on at night, or in rainy weather, and not be frayed. Other than that, I'm good with that. All right, let's go on to dispatch, yeah, I was at your work session, we're talking about dispatch. And, just a suggestion, uh, our collection facility, I don't know all the agreements that's been made between the city and the county, but does the city pay for their prisoners when we're holding them? And that's, that's one thing we wanna make sure that, and there's other agreements out there to make sure that it's equal on any agreement we make with the city, that we're getting equal amount back. And that's all I'm saying.
Correct.
Because I don't know all the agreements that's made out there, and we need to do due diligence and look, and make sure that we are doing our due diligence as county to take and make sure that it's equal. Other than that, I'm good, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Roger. Mr. Michael Hoyt, elections.
I was in Topeka Thursday for County Government Day, and had some conversations that was further to our conversations that we had on Monday, which kinda got lost in the shuffle there about, and a special election for the two new commissioners. I don't think, and this could just be my opinion, I don't think anyone within the state would give a legal opinion to just anybody, I don't even think they would even give you a legal opinion as to how to proceed. The state statute says the Secretary of State is in charge of state and federal elections, and local elections are left to the local officials. The county elections officer, uh, is in charge with conducting those elections, but not establishing procedures or policies to those elections. The only thing that I can find that would prohibit us from having a special election is there is a provision in the statute that you cannot have a special election forty-five days before or after a general or primary election. Now, there may be some question as to what a general election is, and they give the definition here, a general election are held on Tuesday following the first Monday in November of both even-numbered and odd-numbered years. So, we know that in even-numbered years, we have partisan elections, and in odd-numbered years, we have nonpartisan elections. What we would, so, I think it's, that's why this sets us up for the best opportunity is to move quickly, and we've kinda drug our feet, let's face it. People voted for this in November, and here we are four months later, and we really aren't any closer to having representation for those new commissioner districts. And with the exception of District One, which probably changed the least, two and, two and three did change a lot. Changed, you know, two primarily, uh, I'm sorry, three primarily became five. And your, your district, Mr. Kruger, will be almost just all of where District Four is now.
Yeah, went from north to south.
Went from north to south. So, today, if we would consider that map, we have a lot, no representation with taxation. And I think we should move quickly on getting an opinion, if there still seems to be an argument, as to whether we could have a special election before, within the forty-five days before and after, or simultaneous with the partisan, nonpartisan election this year, so that at the latest, we could have people seated January the first. And in the conversations that I had with KAC, um, and other depart, other people up there, you know how people are to, you have to ask, I don't know anybody up there, I have to ask them where they're from, and they tell me what county, and I still don't know where they're from, but they, they say they went through it, and it worked for them, to have special elections for the additional commissioners.
I asked two questions with all due respect. Um, and I'm sure you have, but have you read nineteen dash one oh one A six?
It's, it's ingrained in my memory, you'll have to tell me what it says.
Well, I'll just, I'll hand you the highlighted portion of this, and while you're reading that, I'll ask my second question. And you may have already answered it with your, with your comment, but my question is, if there is a chance of wrongdoing or legality, um, in your words, explain to me the rush for doing it right now as opposed to during a regular cycle.
Now, what, well, explain to me what you think a regular cycle is.
Well, I mean, if, instead of rushing it along, if we just do it in the due time that it's supposed to happen in the norm, yes, yes, in the norm.
My, my only concern is mixing the partisan and nonpartisan, I don't see any problem with, other than no representation, because once those two people come, you guys have gotta, basically have to change your focus from up here to down there.
Right, I get that.
So, that's my only concern.
Okay.
But, and I agree a one hundred percent with this, I think this gives us all the rights we need.
Well, the...
And, and, and let me just make one more statement, you said, if we get into a legal matter, who's gonna sue you? Who would have standing to sue? There's nobody above you. I mean, you could sue for anything.
They're, they're, I mean, yeah, true, and there, I mean, but there is a governing body that holds us accountable, if we're not a, if we don't, um, follow the people that were accountable to the state level, then there could be repercussions, I would, I would guess.
I, I don't know who that would be, wouldn't be the Secretary of State.
I think I read in House Bill, in the House Bill that the governor signed regarding, uh, using the general election for increasing the commissioners, there, there is a penalty if you violate that.
If you, well, there's a penalty if you don't, if you don't do it.
Yeah, if you have the special election, and you're not, when she's signed saying that you shouldn't have a special election.
But I don't think she said that.
I mean, I'm all for moving things forward, but, but, and I think, maybe I misunderstood you, but you said if we do the special election, they're still not gonna take seats until probably January.
Well, that, that would be typically, whenever you have an election in November, they're typically seated on the first.
We're accomplishing the same thing by doing a special election or by waiting, the only thing I see in the general election that, that, that accomplishes, that the special election don't, is that the people, you have to file if you wanna run, if we have the special election, then the party's picking the people. If, if we do it in a general election, then the people are picking the people, uh, because they're gonna, you know, the person's gonna have to file, they're either gonna have to walk out and get signatures, just like I did, or they're gonna have to, uh, you know, file and pay, and, and then get on, get on the ballot and, and run. I mean, that's, that's where I see the difference between the two, and...
Well, I guess you're gonna have the same thing in June, so...
And I ask my questions, uh, for learning purposes.
Sure.
And if, and if, and if that holds true, what Miss, what Commissioner Bearbar just said, I would much rather, and I think you would too, with, with, with how involved you are, I think it would be beneficial for the people to pick these people as opposed to a party.
Absolutely, I'm all for that, never, I, uh...
And I figured you would, but I just wanted to make that comment.
But I'm not, I'm not, I don't think it's, it would be prudent to wait and seat them in twenty-seven, and that was part of the conversation last year.
Yeah, I think it was always gonna be twenty-six.
Our plan was to always set them in January twenty-six.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, some of that got lost in the shuffle last week.
I apologize for that then, because our plan has always been to swear them in in January twenty-six.
Yeah, we're not gonna prolong it any longer than...
I think you had to determine whether we wanna do a one-year or a three-year.
That's what we've gotta figure out, is whether we're gonna put them on the short cycle coming up, or if we're gonna put them on there.
Yes, since they have to be off...
Or we're gonna split them, one of them will be one year, and one of them will be three.
Since they have to be offset, who's gonna go with, with him, who's gonna go with us.
No more than a simple majority at any given time.
Correct.
They could all go run with you, or they could all run split or whatever.
Probably would be best to, to have them all go with the one.
I would think.
Yeah.
That would be my feeling, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that.
No problem, thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
And, oh, uh, we need to rescind that resolution, that was...
We never put...
Okay.
Yep.
I kinda remember voting on it, but they remember voting on it.
Somebody may have mentioned April, but it was never actually passed in the resolution that we passed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, thank you, Mr. Hoyt. All right, new business, department updates, Ms. Susan Walker, County Clerk.
I just need to know how you guys would like to handle the budget process and the calendar for budget, that generally starts in March, and so, just need some direction from you on how you guys wanna handle it.
Um, I'd say we start gathering stuff in March.
Okay.
I have to look at a March calendar, but...
Um, I, I mean, I think the earlier we start, the earlier we can get through it, and the, and the longer we have to work on it, the better off we are, instead of waiting until the last minute.
Do you want department meetings, do you want, that's kind of what I'm asking, is how do you want to handle the process? You know, in the past, the departments have turned in a request, and sometimes they come before the commission, sometimes they don't, so I just, I just need to know how you wanna handle, do you want work sessions?
I, I think so, and let's, uh, I would send everybody a notice that we're, we're gonna start the budget process, so get their, get your budgets together, whether you're asking for more, asking for the same, and then when we get those, I guess we can decide when to start having work sessions with each department head.
I would like, personally, um, when they turn their budget in, sometime very soon after that, we have a work session this first time around, face to face with all the department heads, so if we have questions of them or them of us, that we can all get on the same page, just right off jump, and, uh, alleviate any kind of...
My other question is, how detailed do you want their requests to be, because in the, they've been all over the place, some have just been like wages, contractual commodities, some have been very detailed, so what, what are you expecting as a commission?
That's what I was gonna, I mean, that's...
This person's here very detailed.
I think we oughta have a work session first, and then, I mean, and of course, it's, it's open, so, uh, that way we can kinda work out what we want them to bring, and how we wanna set it up, and then, then have a work session either individually or what.
I think we meet with each individual head.
Yeah.
I think it'd be beneficial for us to see what they bring us, and then if we don't like it, change it from there, because they may bring us exactly what we want.
If we do a work session first, then we kinda lay out what we want them to bring, plus we also could set what, 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 what we want them to, to, to put in their budgets, whether we, you know, at what level are we going, you know, because I mean, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a major discussion about, uh...
I think very...
Cut some corners.
I think very detailed, um, so we can learn the ins and outs of their department, is, is...
So, I, I, I mean, I just say, we do, we do a work session first, so we can work out the details, and, I mean, that's my, my opinion.
And how comfortable are you all with the statutory requirements of like fund accounting and things like that, do you want a work session that kinda talks about that?
I think the whole thing.
I think that should be in our first, I think that should be in our first commission session.
Just kind of, so we learn, you know?
Anything that teaches us what we need to replace jobs, what we need to do.
So what I'll probably do is take the current budget and just kind of explain what the statutory requirements are, and then you guys can decide, okay, this is the information we want, is that, does that sound okay?
Yeah, sounds good, yep.
Yep.
So what we'll do is just try to set a work session for, I guess with you and us three, of course, it'll be open to the public, but...
Sometime in March.
Yeah.
First, first, first part of March. Say there was snow, am I hearing stuff?
We could do it on a, you know, like, on a Monday, just come in early or whatever.
Are you working Mondays?
I work Mondays, I can't get here till like five.
Oh.
So...
But now you got Tuesdays and Wednesdays?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday off.
And which day is it that you can?
I'm usually tied up in a commission meeting on Monday, and, and, well, every Monday, and then every other Tuesday, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, with advance notice, I can, I could just take vacation and, and make it.
Let me, I mean, I'm good.
So you've got like Wednesday the twelfth, or Wednesday the nineteenth?
I'm good either day, I think, and, uh, yeah, yeah, so far.
You guys pick a day and make it happen.
Huh? Pick a time in the day, because Wednesdays, I'm good.
So am I.
All day long.
So am I. It's you.
Pick a time, you wanna take a whole day, or you wanna take a couple hours off work?
Or you wanna do it after you get off work?
I don't think we're gonna accomplish much in two hours.
We can have it like three in the afternoon if you want.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go at like two o'clock, and that way we can...
On the twelfth, or the nineteenth?
Either, either way.
Let's do twelfth, so we can get started early.
Okay.
You said two o'clock?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We'll get that started. Just, do we need to vote on that? Okay. While we're still on new business, did that take care of that, was that okay? March twelfth, GP, work session, okay, while we're still on new business, um, next Monday is a holiday. So do we still wanna have a meeting? Or do you guys want Monday off?
I, I'm working Monday anyways, I mean, it's not one of our, not one of our holidays.
I, I get the day off, but it doesn't matter to me.
I think our clerk would appreciate not having to come in, once you don't have to work Monday.
It's, it's, um, I'm, I'm good either way.
I think that, uh, in my personal opinion, I think that, um, we've got through a, a lot of our super pressing items to where, like last time, it wouldn't have been to our benefit at all to miss, this one, um, we probably could if you guys...
I don't, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Our next, would be a week later?
Yeah, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't work next week, but we'd work the week after.
Yep.
So, okay, so, no meeting on the holiday. Which is, what day is that, February?
Seventeen.
Can't hear you, you say no meeting next?
Did you say no meeting next?
No meeting on February 17th, next Monday. I will make a motion that we cancel our meeting for next Monday, February 17th.
Celebrate President's Day.
To celebrate Presidents, yes.
I'll second.
The good ones and the bad ones.
Yes.
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 Okay.
I'll go first today.
Okay. Go, go. Hold on, I've got a whole list of stuff we've got to talk about real quick.
You do?
Yep. That's my job.
Okay, good.
Our work session scheduled for Wednesday. We're supposed to get some severe winter weather, and I don't care if we come in and do this, but, uh, we're going to have probably the same people that are here tonight try to show up for it, and do we really want to make it dangerous for them to come to the work session? I'm not saying we cancel it now, but everybody should know that if it snows like they say it's going to, we probably won't have it.
Make your call then, you know, when you, when you see the weather, if you want to cancel.
So, I will stay in contact with the clerk, and as soon as the weather starts changing, we will cancel that meeting, so everybody knows, and she will get the word out. Good with you guys?
Yes.
Because I don't want, I don't want to put nobody in danger trying to get here.
Sounds great.
So. Is Eric here tonight, or is he, was he not able to make it? And it's fine if he's not, it's not a big deal. Yeah, he wasn't on the schedule, so if he's not here, it's not a big deal. We got to make a decision at some point about Unique Road and 95th Street. Because I have been called several times, and I've talked to the Register of Deeds, who was working with Eric on roads and maps. I went and talked to her today, and this particular section of Unique Road was closed. I believe the date she had was 1954. And I've been getting called about us maintaining it farther up the road that doesn't really exist. Long story short, it goes from 95th Street, about 1,000 feet is the road we maintain, and then it goes up to a fellow's house, and it turns around and comes back. And he says, up when his kids were in school, they maintained it for the school bus to get up there, turn around, and get back on its route. We haven't maintained it since, but according to maps, it's been closed since 1954. He wants it reopened. He wants us to maintain it. We can reopen it, but that's an expense on the county unless we do what the state says we can do, and says we'll reopen it, but he has to pay to build it back up to our standards, and then we'll maintain it. So, I want you guys to think about that and come back to me with what you want to do.
You said this is Unique Road and 95th?
Yeah, 95th and Unique.
I think we need some information from Eric.
I need to go out and look.
I know, I know exactly where they're talking about.
Well, I, I'm going to go look.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah. So, bug in your ear. So, all right. We also have another road issue, and I should have got the copies of the map she had, and I can't remember where this one's at. At some point, we're going to have to make a resolution for an easement, because a farmer has a piece of property that is landlocked, and he can't get to it. The road that used to go to it has been closed for a long time, because there's like a 40-foot drop-off, so you can't even, we're not building a bridge for him to get to a farm field, I'll tell you that right now. But one of the neighbors is, there's an old railroad right away that goes through the neighbor's property, and he says he will give the man an easement to go down the railroad to his field, so.
Yeah, by law, that, that, they have to give him a, a way to his property, so.
Yes, and all the roads around it, I guess, are technically closed, so, so when the man gives him the easement, we'll have to make a resolution for that. But we'll wait for actual, the actual location and the, okay. Next. We are past our two and three-hour-long meetings. I think we can handle business every other Monday, minus paying bills. So, how would you guys feel about every other Monday, having an actual meeting to take care of business, having a very short one on one Monday, pay the bills, and then turn it into a public work session?
I'm asking this question because I don't know the answer. I know statutorily we're supposed to have so many meetings a month, but is it just one? Because I thought it was more than that, so appreciate it, thank you.
Well, we're technically having a meeting every week.
Yeah.
I'll open the meeting like I always do.
So, you want to do like a.
We'll do accounts payable, payroll. And then the meeting will technically be over, and then we'll go into a work session. And it gets hard.
I think that would be beneficial for a while, at least.
And it don't have to be forever.
Yeah.
And I'm not asking for a vote on that today either.
Sure, sure.
I just brainstorm. I've got a long drive back and forth to work.
You're good, you're good. It's not a, that's a, that's a good idea.
Now, last thing, and then I'll shut up, and you guys can have the floor. Every Tuesday morning at 7:45, I'm on the radio.
You're doing such a great job.
Well, sometimes life happens, and I may not be able to make it, so which one of you want to step in and do that job for me when I can't make it?
I, I could be mistaken, but I was thinking that, I heard Dave say the other day how much he would really enjoy being on the radio.
You didn't hear nothing, because we can't, we can't talk.
True that, true that. I may have fibbed.
Just for that, I nominate, I nominate Leroy. No. If you need somebody to fill in for you, I do not have a problem with that.
Okay, and it's not, I, I'm good this week. I've been calling in.
I don't really have a problem with that.
The last six or seven minutes, he asks you a few questions. They've gave me my word, they'll never surprise me, and not let me know what they're going to talk about, so.
We're both willing to help you.
Okay, so I will let the radio know that, and I will, what I will do is just, I guess, let the clerk know that I can't do it one week, and then she can reach out to you guys and see which one of you wants to do it that week. You can go in person, or you can call them on the phone.
Okay.
So, that'll work.
So, if I tell her no, when she contacts me, you're going to have to do it.
So. It's on radio, Dave, just don't answer the phone, got it?
Or, or if I know on Monday night, I'll let you know ahead of time, and you guys can decide who does it the next day.
That works.
Oh, okay, all right. Commissioner comments?
Stepping away from the mic, because I want to look at you guys. Our joint meeting the other night, it went well, but what I appreciated more than anything, that everybody in the audience were our county people that come to these meetings. I didn't see many city people in the audience. I just want to applaud you guys for, no matter where we go, showing up, keeping your interest, keeping us in line, and I want to applaud you guys for being there, so, thank you.
You done?
I'm done, go for it.
I only got one thing. The work being done out there at the entrance to the hospital is a, is not county property. I had several people ask me today if we had people working on county property. It's not county property. And I went out and talked with the individual that is cutting the trees down, and he is doing it voluntarily for the wood. They were cutting hedge and whatever other good wood they can get out, because that land is getting cleared by legacy, and so, you know, just so everybody knows, it's not county-owned property, and it's not anything that we're doing. It's private company, so, that's all I got to say. Well, I don't like talking. I'm all talked out. So, I guess we will adjourn the meeting.